To be late for my first meeting as a board president. Okay, let's have the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence, please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
Mr. Bonomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Early.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Yanek.
Here.
Public comment on and questions directed to the board on agenda items only, Mr. Bonomo, anybody?
No.
Nobody? Alright.
They didn't want to steal the show on you.
Yeah, okay. Move the board, approve board many, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it, motion passes.
Alright, at this time, we have a presentation from the June 30th, 2014 audit report conducted by Malley LLP auditing firm, if they want to come up.
Thank you. Can you hear me? My name is Dale Upenhauer. I was the manager on the audit engagement. We handed out to each of you the audit presentation. I'll only take a few minutes of your time. So the first thing that I wanted to go over with you was the audit scope and timing. And basically, that just lists a few of the items that we did as far as the audit. So we've obtained the trial balance and supporting account analysis. We reviewed your internal controls, which we found no issues with whatsoever. We tested your cash and investments, capital assets, accounts payable, debt, revenues, expenses, and we did a single audit. And we did some data extraction. We have some software that we use that we do data extraction on. So with that, we were able to analyze your general ledger, subsequent disbursements, and journal entries. The next page is the required communications that we're required to have with those charged with governance after the audit is complete. The first line item there, you see, there's, we had an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. We had an unqualified opinion for the single audit. For the SAS 114 and SAS 115 reports, we had no disagreements or material weaknesses noted with relation to financial reporting. I gave to Tony there, the SAS 114 letter, which he'll distribute. There won't be a SAS 115 letter because we're only required to do that if we had any internal control issues, which we did not. So that's a good thing, and there won't be a SAS 115 letter. We have a note here for perspective. That has to do with the pension accounting that's coming for, for June of 2015. What that's going to do is push your unfunded pension liability onto your government-wide balance sheet. The preliminary estimates we've gotten from P S R so far is saying that it's going to be about three times your annual payroll is what's going to be your unfunded liability. It sounds pretty scary, but every school district in the country is in the same boat, Last page is just the results. So letter A there is the government-wide financial statements. The government-wide financial statements, what they are is the financial statements under full accrual. So that includes your capital assets and all of your debt. So as you can see, under government-wide financial statements under full accrual method, their change in net position was 2.4 million. For the governmental funds, which does not include capital assets or debt, all those things are expensed as paid, your general fund balance is 16.2 million, and your general fund change in that balance was 1.9 million. On the very last page are the results of the food service fund. So there's 352,000 of capital assets in the food service fund, about 72,000 of net position, and a change in net position of a loss of 96,000. I'll answer any questions you may have at this time.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Okay, then I'll turn the program over to Dr. Antonelli for the agendas. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. At this time, I would like to recognize two of our schools, the Arthur Street Elementary School and the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School. They have been designated by the state as reward schools. The state has recognized just 16 schools throughout the Commonwealth as reward schools, and we have two schools on that list of 16. Reward schools are recognized for significantly improving student achievement, specifically closing the achievement gap in the areas of reading and mathematics. Both schools will be eligible for up to $50,000 in competitive grants. And under a collaborative arrangement with a similar school in proximity with a similar demographic, that being the Hazleton Elementary Middle School, that school will also be eligible to receive up to $50,000 in competitive grants. So I want to congratulate and thank the hard-working teachers and administrators and students in those buildings, as well as parents who have obviously made a significant commitment to their child's education. So again, a job well done in your designation as reward schools, Arthur Street Elementary and Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School. Also, I had the opportunity this morning to attend a press conference with Senator Udi Chack and Congressman Barletta. They are initiating in Loser County Project Shine, which is an after-school initiative for at-risk students K through 12. It basically consists of four evenings up to 32 weeks during the school year and during the summer to provide at-risk students with project-based learning activities related to the STEM fields, science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics. Again, the goal of the project is to increase student achievement, increase student attendance, and decrease classroom discipline issues. We're very excited to be selected as a school district to participate in this evidence-based program. It has been used most recently in Carbon County, as well as throughout other areas of the state with a great deal of success. So again, this program will be launched in September of 2015. It's a federal and state initiative with local contributions. Again, Project Shine. Also, I would like to take a moment to thank the Faith Assembly of God Church, specifically Pastor Sal Reyes. He was here a few days ago with brand-new coats. He had several boxes of brand-new winter coats, and he simply said, "Please distribute them to your most at-risk and your neediest students." And that's what we are doing through the generosity of Sal Reyes and the folks at Faith Assembly of God Church. We will have students now who quite possibly would not have a warm winter coat now to have a brand-new winter coat, so we thank those folks there. Dr. Butler, public recognition.
Thank you, Doctor Antonelli. We have several special recognitions this evening. First of which is to a parent, Mr. Kale McKeller, a parent of one of our students, Alexis Shido, who donated eight boxes of paper to the Hazleton Area Academy of Science, to the STEM Building. Very grateful for that. I don't think Mr. McKeller is here this evening, but again, we extend our thank you to Mr. McKeller. Next is a very special student recognition certificate of selection for award. This goes to Ms. Sarah Di Laurentis. Sarah? Sarah, Sarah feels, yeah, don't be shy. This, Sarah was selected for the National Academy of Future Science and Technology Leaders, Award of Excellence, for outstanding academic achievement, leadership potential, and determination to serve humanity in the field of science and technology. This is a very prestigious award, Sarah. You bring pride to the district. We're so happy for you. Great job, and congratulations. We had five teachers in the school district engage in a writing initiative to veterans in honor of Veterans Day. I had a chance to read, Dr. Antonelli and I did, read samples of the letters. Time does not permit us to share excerpts from the letters this evening, but believe me, they were very compelling, interesting, fun, and very heartfelt. We'd like to take a moment and just recognize the teachers who were so instrumental in making this happen across the district. First of all, Allison Coriel. Kristi Parambo. Mr. Edward Moore, who I know was unable to attend this evening. Cory Kozel. And finally, Lindsey Barkanek. And again, these, yes, thank you. This really was a celebration of our students writing from grades K through 12. And some of the writing of our younger students in particular was just completely astonishing. Not only the verbiage, but what came from their heart and what Veterans Day stood for We always like to recognize parent volunteers, and we do that again this month by recognizing Kim Zamudio. Kim, are you here this evening? And Kim is recognized for her service, longtime service, essential assistance at Heights Terrace Elementary School. Kim, please know the staff and the administration appreciate your willingness to give sacrificially to our schools and to the students. Thank you so much. And finally, our mock trial team has again been footloose and fancy-free and doing very well in the competitive circuit. We have a number of students here this evening. They were awarded, for the second year in a row, as the undefeated team in the tournament in Monroe County Bar Association Mock Trial Invitational at Notre Dame High School. This is the second year in a row that the team has taken first place. In no specific order, I'd like to announce to students, I have my faithful assistant here who's going to hand out the certificates. If you're here this evening, students, please come down and remain standing. Alyssa Tobias. Emily Kerchak. And by the way, Alyssa won first place as the best attorney in the entire tournament. Jared Fetterman. Brianna Stephaniscow. Olivia Kay. And Olivia was recognized as part of the all-tournament team of witnesses. Maggie Malone. Sarah Galade. Leirna Sverona. Abigail Hartz. Michael Gavzig. Michael, Michael was also recognized on the all-tournament team of witnesses. Jasmine Thomas. Keisha De Jesus. Keisha was recognized as the all-tournament team of lawyers. Luke Olander. Feel free to give yourself a certificate, Luke. Okay, Berissa Flaherty. Emily Buckman. Grizzle Tutino. Rosanna Plensencia. Chris Lee Mena. Jaslyn Jimenez. And Jaslyn was chosen as the all-tournament team of witnesses. And finally, Chris Tessitore. Now, team, team success doesn't come without great leadership in the form of adult leadership, so we'd like to recognize, first of all, Crystal Lyons, coach and sponsor of the team. And also, two attorneys, and I don't know if they're present tonight, but if they are, we'd like to recognize these two individuals who gave, again, very sacrificially to the team and made a huge difference in, in the competitiveness among the team, and that's Attorney Conrad Falvello. And Attorney Nina De Cosmo. So students, I was at an event this morning at a PSU, recognizing some of our STEM students and extemporating a speech and various different competitive speech endeavors. This is another example of how proud we are of you guys and what a tremendous testimony you are to this district and a product of our, of our student body, and we just thank you so much for your efforts and doing a great job, and we wish you luck as you go on with the competitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Item 31 will be removed from the agenda. Item 31. Remove items 1 through 7 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 1 through 7, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No one, 6.
Ayes have it, noting Mr. Wallace has no vote.
Approve items 8 through 24 with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? I have one comment before we vote. Marion DeBalko, I think it's item number...
23.
23. I see she's retiring. Marion DeBalko was a native mine when I was the principal at McAdoo Clara's Elementary School at the time, and I always thought she did a great job while I was there, and I'm sure she was still doing a great job under the leadership of Matt Mornell, who's there now. So I'd just like to wish her a long, healthy, and happy retirement because she deserves it, and that's all I really have to say.
Second that. Second.
Mr. Reba?
Numbers 8 through 24, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items 25 through 36, excluding 31, with one motion.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
I'd like to send out the same sentiment for item number 26.
Second that, Bobby.
I second it too. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 25 through 36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve items 37 through 42 with one motion. So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Could I ask a question? Number 41, we're giving the facility out for nothing, but number 42, we're charging the youth basketball league $50. Could we waive that $50?
We can, Mr. Wallace. The reason why number 42 is being charged anything to begin with is they do charge...
They do to get it. Fine, then never mind. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, on number 39, reassurance that that has been carefully investigated and...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it has. Two physicians.
And number 40, is this a, is this a test that will, in essence, bring some of our paraprofessionals back up to, or some of our paraprofessional applicants into, into line with what they need in order to be able to apply?
Yes, as highly qualified status. Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 37 through 42, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Recommend board approve the adjudication containing findings of fact and conclusions of law, termination, the employment of Mr. Thomas Tirico immediately for the reasons outlined within the adjudication.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on 43? No?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, congratulations on your new post this evening.
Will see.
Thank you. You're doing wonderful. I just, I look for the opportunity for the day for us to be able to speak about the, the entire situation that is at hand here. I know for one, I'm very uneasy with this, but I look for the opportunity, the day, that the public is given all the information that we're given, every piece of it, and, and, and so they know what the nine board members, nine volunteer board members had to do, especially this close to the, to the Christmas holiday.
And I would second that because I know what you're talking about, so does every other board member up here, as well as the central administration here.
And if I, if I, just one more thing, and I know the public will not understand this, but I want to, I want to apologize for my actions, especially to, to you, Marv. I'm very, very sorry.
Accepted.
Thank you.
Anything else on this one?
I accept your apology too, Bob.
I wasn't talking to you, Tony. You were the only one that I was pretty certain wasn't offended by.
Would you have any...
But thank you, Mr. Bonomo.
Would you have anything to say to me because you were looking at me? I don't know if that meant anything or not.
Excuse me, I was sitting next to him.
Again, it, I do really heartfeltly apologize.
Hey, you're a good man.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reba?
Number 43, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
Ayes have it, noting Mr. Bonomo and Mr. John's no votes.
Recommend board approve 16 students from the Hazleton Area High School's mock trial team to compete at the University of Pennsylvania's Benjamin Franklin Invitational from January 16 through January 18.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments on 44?
Just one...
I'm sorry.
No, please.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we saw the young gentlemen and women that were here tonight that are representing our school, using our school's name, being able to go here. I would like us to also cover the registration fees, seminar fees, for them to go and just make the students responsible, or the club for their meals. I think that's the least we can do as they're representing our school and they're doing it in such fine fashion, that we pick up the registration and seminar fees also. I'll second that.
Alright, any questions or comments on what Mr. Wallace just said? Anybody have anything?
No limitations on meals, I mean, they can have... The meals, they're gonna, they're gonna take care of that, but I think the least we can do is pay for the fees for the kids to enter after they've done so well.
I agree.
And I, if I was going, doctor, it'd be limits on the meals, yes.
Mr. President, if I may, can I allow my time to Mr. Luke Olander, our student representative that's been doing a fine job? Yeah, please, if you would, Luke, I know you know more about this. I mean, certainly, Dr. Butler gave us a wonderful presentation to begin, but maybe Mr. Olander could shed even more lights on this.
Before I elaborate on what mock trial is and what the team does, I would like to thank the board for recognizing the team and for supporting us at our competition at UPenn. And we also like to thank Attorney De Cosmo and Attorney Falvello for guiding us and the work ethic of the team, because I see it on a daily basis. I commend it, and all of you give, they all give the high school a good name. And mock trial is basically, it's, it's a competitive courtroom experience. It's a simulation where it's basically defense versus prosecution. You get a case and you have to study it like an actual lawyer. And also, you also try out to be a witness, and you have to memorize the witness's affidavit, and you have to basically be an actor, you have to act like that witness. And also involved with the mock trial team is the forensics club, which is a great club because it encourages students to work on public speaking. It involves Congress debates, and all of these are good for the school, and we thank you again for supporting us.
Luke, about how much time does your team put into the researching for your competition?
Well, we practice, right now, we're practicing five days a week for about two hours each day, and we, of course, research on our own time as well, so we put in, we put in our work, thanks to Ms. Lyons.
Thank you both.
So I think we have an amendment offered by Mr. Wallace.
Yes, my amendment was to cover the registration fees and the seminar fees.
And we have a second, right? We already have a second? Questions, any other questions or comments on that? Mr. Reba?
On the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Recommend board approve the...
We got a vote on the amended motion number 44. All in favor of 44 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Recommend board approve the Hazleton Area Academy of Science and Technology leaders Recommend board approve the Hazelton Area Academy of Sciences to hold an initial focus group meeting on January 21st to address how to better serve the minority populations academically and socially. Special attention will be paid to information regarding application rates and acceptance rates of minority students.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
Thank you.
And since this, before we vote, since this is a new item, any public comment on it? No? Okay, then, Mr. Reba?
On the new motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
And that concludes the agenda.
We just need to approve the bills.
We will now go to presentation of bills.
We could just skip that, Doc, if you'd like, that's okay.
Need a motion and a second.
I make a motion on 45?
Second. Questions or comments on any of the bills? Something different. Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the bills, letters A through N, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed on A, invoice number 328947.
Same.
32, what was that?
328947. I'm a no vote on that.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Any other no?
Anyone else? No on A.
Brian?
I'm a no on B, whatever part of that's attributable to dirt.
Is any of it going to...
It isn't, it's not attributable to dirt.
Because I was following Mr. Olander.
No dirt.
There was dirt.
So that's a yes then?
I'm a yes.
Okay, right.
Ayes have it, the bills are approved.
Could I make a motion to adjourn?
I have a comment. Can I go first? I just want to thank Nutrition, Inc., and all the volunteers at the Christmas dinner for the senior citizens, even the waitresses, waiters, Mr. Maholik and Mr. Wallace, administrative, and all the students that provided the entertainment. As I was on the other end, as I took many senior citizens to breakfast that day, and it was so greatly appreciated. And I'd like to also thank all the Christmas programs that have been going on. I've attended several of them, and it's really getting our community in the spirit, in the spirit, and that's what we need right now in Hazelton, is all the positive aspects.
Marphi, you're 100%. The Christmas program at the high school the other night was absolutely incredible. My mother and one of her friends went and said it was better than paying for a ticket on Broadway, and the kids just did an incredible job. And I haven't seen any of the others, but you're right, it's a joy to watch. They really do a super job, and all the time that's put into that is remarkable, but we should be proud.
Any other questions or comments?
Then, go ahead, Bob. Mr. President, if I may, again, I would just like to throw my time to Mr. Olander. He's got a pretty serious topic, I think, to speak on behalf of the swim team.
So, okay. I was, I was just, I was talking about this issue with Coach Yakubowski of the swim team and with some of the swimmers. It's about our current timing system. The system we have now, it was donated to us for the 93-94 season by Del Bar Sheet Metal, and since then, the Swimming Booster Club and the YMCA bought the equipment to fix it, but now it's, it's looking like it's beyond repair. It's consistently a half second off, and officials who time the swim meets don't want to use it because of the inconsistencies, and they can't be considered official district times. And this, this is a bad thing because our swimmers who are working so hard, their, their times may not count during our meets. Only our first-place times will count. Our second-place and third-place times will not count in going to districts. Plus, it also affects college scouts who want to watch a particular swimmer swim. They won't get their accurate time. So if you would consider purchasing a new timing system for the swim team before districts, it would be much appreciated. Just something to consider.
Mr. Kozanski, could we possibly get information on how much that would cost, maybe for the next committee meetings?
Yep, and actually, that'd be a good project for Mrs. Drevnok that we just hired. She's starting January 5th with our education foundation, so I'm sure there's some ex-swim parents out there that might be willing to even help us out here. When are districts?
March.
Yeah, districts are sometime in March.
So if we did this in January, that would be enough time?
Yes, that'd be a good time.
So we'll get on it tomorrow.
Thank you.
And Luke, and again, I'm not sure if you know this, I certainly do not, but up until the time of the new clock, so the second, third-place finishers, that time might not count.
They would only count for points, but not, their times would not count in going into districts.
How many home meets do you have? Because away meets, this wouldn't count, right? I mean, this wouldn't come into play.
I'm not certain of how many home meets we have. I could ask, I could ask the coach.
Okay. Yeah, I think just because this might be more timely than March, if it, you know, if the effects could be far greater.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to need at least, they're going to need at least before the final home meet.
Okay.
So those kids could get their times for districts ready.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anything else? No? Then before we close, I'd like to take this opportunity...
Mr. Cattin.
I won't take this opportunity, never mind.
Two things. Number one, I would like to make the announcement that the Budget Committee will meet on Wednesdays beginning January 14th, every two weeks, at 6 o'clock. I also would like at this time to nominate the following committee, community leaders to represent their counties, from Carbon County, Joe Clark, Charlie Shalas, from Schuylkill, Mary LaBert, Dane Watrow, and from Luzerne, Jerry Brill, and Vincent Zola.
Do we need a motion on that?
I just made it.
You just made it second then? And then questions or comments if we get a second? I'll second. Questions or comments?
I have a problem with, one of the individuals is a school district employee, and that's...
Is there a problem with that, Mr. Slusser?
There's not a legal problem, but I understand the concern, it's up to the board. My only concern is I think we need to open this up to the public. This is the first that it's being announced, there might be other people from the public. It seems like we're getting the same people back year after year.
I think we did the same way last year, Mr. Early.
Well, then maybe I think it's time we open it up. We used to make an announcement and then like people submit their names through...
Has there been an announcement or any clearance?
That were interested?
No, there wasn't one last year either. And prior to that, the last few years, there wasn't a committee. It was canceled by the past president.
And I think what happens too is nobody else does apply. It's usually the same people for that reason that I remember from last year. Anybody else have an opinion on that?
There was a motion, a second?
There was a second, okay.
Was there a second?
Somebody did.
Bobby did.
Bobby seconded. Any other comments or questions then before we vote? Public comment, since it's a new item?
I'll just say I have no issues with the name, but if any members of the public, number one, it's open to all the public.
Yeah, they could...
Number, so everybody's welcome, and certainly your input is able to be given at that, but if anybody else from the public would like to serve on the committee, certainly, I wouldn't be opposed to open it up to more people.
You want Mr. Maholik? You're absolutely correct, and I implore the public, the please come to the budget meetings this year. It's going to be a very tight budget. The state right now is saying they're over $2 billion short on next year's budget, and they said that they don't want to, they don't want to cancel big items like education, cut back on the money. If the state cuts back on our money, I don't know where we're going to turn. People here cannot afford a huge tax increase, period. So I implore the people, please come to the budget meetings. They're upstairs in the conference room, upstairs, right?
Yes.
If necessary, we can have them down here, but come so you can see what's going on, so you can see the transparency that we're trying to establish as a board. That's extremely important. You can't cry over spilt milk after it's a done deal. Please come and give us your input before it's too late. That's all I'm asking.
And I would second that because I sat in on all the budget meetings last year, and you're a lot better informed if you're there, and then when a decision has to be made, I believe by the end of June, at least you know what's going on, so that's a great...
I think you'll have a tentative budget by May, and then finalize within 30 days, right, Tony?
Yes. Again, I would request that Dr. Antonelli prioritize items as he sees them being important to the, particularly to the education of this district, again, when it comes to the mechanics of making the buildings run and so forth. I don't know what you can do about that.
I think, Dr. Charles, you're absolutely correct, because I had the conversation with Tony Reba already, that when the budget is done, it's done. And we can't have people coming in October asking for a new series of books, because if they would have done their homework in the beginning, they wouldn't be coming in October for those books. Additional teachers, that's a different story, because we can't figure out what that is. But we have to spend more time developing the budget, and when it's passed, it's passed. And no additions, except teachers or something in that order. If you forget to order something, too bad. If you forgot to order, you didn't need it. That's my opinion, for what it's worth.
Anything else? Then we have a motion and a second on what Mr. John has presented. Roll call.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'm no on Schuylkill, only because one of the two people is a district employee. Yes on Carbon and Luzerne.
Ayes have it, noting Mr. Early and Mr. Wallace's no votes.
One other thing I would like to mention, and I asked Mr. Reba tonight, if at the end of the second semester, first semester, if we can have a total accountability or counting of what it cost us last year for the alternative ed program in Wilkes-Barre, and a total amount that cost us for the first semester with an in-house alternative ed program, and to see if it's cheaper, which we were led to believe, if we brought it back to Hazelton, it would be much cheaper. I really don't believe that, but I hope I'm wrong. So I would appreciate if we could have at the end of the semester, Mr. Reba, total expense for last year up until the end of the semester, and the total expense up until the end of this year, first semester.
Is there any public comment on the last item? My apologies on that, on Mr. John's motion. Any other comments or questions on the evening or motions?
I would only caution that you can't look at the cost in a vacuum, you must look at the, at what you are able to attain from the money you spend. I would simply put that out as a caution, that's not a motion or an amendment.
I agree. And we also be able, have to understand, we have to live within our budget, and we have to live with what we can afford to spend and not go overboard.
Any other public comment on any non-agenda items? Any other public comment? All right, then before we adjourn, I'd like to take this opportunity... Are we sure now?
Why are you looking at me?
To wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I always wanted to say this, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Meeting adjourned.
Good job, good job.